Thank you, councilmembers Alarcon. Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 3rd, 2007. We are in the John F. Raro Memorial Council Chambers in Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., save for the first Friday of the month when we meet at Van Nuys City Hall in our effort to bring City Council closer to all Angelinos. We'll be meeting there this Friday, but otherwise, we are here in Council Chambers downtown. Nope, not this Friday? Oh, we're in recess. I'm sorry. We're off this Good Friday, so we will not be in Van Nuys this Friday, but we usually meet the first Friday of the month in Van Nuys. We want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, and we broadcast live on Channel 35, LA City View, your city channel, and we are rebroadcast in the evening via tape, and we also are available online. If you want to go to our city's homepage at www.lacity.org and click on City Council page, you can find live streaming webcast video of our council meetings, and soon, we will have video on demand where you can pull down individual items and individual meetings, and we look forward to debuting that through the good work of Councilmember Bernard Parks' office, and I want to thank my staff for working on that as well. Lastly, if you aren't close to a computer or a television, you can always call into Council Phone, which is a service of Information Technology Agency, and you can call 213-621-CITY and listen to the committee or full council proceedings via telephone. We invite members of the public to testify during general public comment, which is for items that are not on our agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction. You can find speaker cards in the back. If you'll fill those out and give them to one of the sergeants-at-arms, we will be able to make sure you get heard. Also, if you're closer to Van Nuys, you can always testify remotely from Van Nuys City Hall, and with teleconferencing, we're able to watch you here in Council Chambers and on Channel 35. Also, for items that have been agendized, as not yet having had a public hearing in committee, you can testify here as well on those items, just filling out a speaker card as well in the back. All items before the City Council have a public hearing either in council committee or in the full council. Our council ambassadors are usually in the back of the room, local high school students who are here to assist you in the ins and outs of our meetings and are available as well, and we do have posted our code of decorum for our speakers, which is on the podium up there, and we have a timer clock to help you manage your time when you are speaking to the public, speaking to the council, excuse me. We have councilmembers Alarcon, Weezer, Parks, Perry, Smith, and Wesson here pursuant to council rules. We are supposed to be here at 10:00 a.m., and we are waiting three more councilmembers. We have Councilmember Cardenas and Labange excused today on city business, so that would leave Councilmember Gruel. If you will please make your way down, we are waiting your presence. Councilmember Han, if you will join us, we're also waiting you in committee. Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Zine. Those members are still expected. We are waiting your presence again. Councilmembers Gruel, Han, Reyes, Rosendahl, Weiss, and Zine. We need three more members. It is 10 after the hour, so thank you to members of the public for your patience, and we will begin this meeting very shortly. As soon as we have Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Han, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Zine, we will have a floor. Mr. Zine is here. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present in the court, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves. Ms. Perry seconds without objection. That's unanimously approved. Next order, business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Parks seconds without objection. That is approved as well. Next order of business?
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute.
Okay. If I can please ask everybody in Council Chambers to rise for our pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Smith, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
Ladies and gentlemen, please place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, please.
First items, Mr. President, are items for which, excuse me, items noticed for public hearings. Items 1 through 4 are building and safety items, and the department is recommending that item number 3 can be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid.
Okay.
And then that would leave before council 1, 2, and 4.
All right, colleagues, we have 1, 2, and 4. Any specials, 1, 2, and 4? Seeing none, let's open and close the public hearings on those, and go ahead, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, items 5 and 6 are both also public hearing items, and I believe there are cards on both of those.
Let's call those special for cards from the public. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 7 through 29, and on 7, that is, Commissioner, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Please, let's hold the Commissioner nomination on the desk.
That would leave before council, items 8 through 29, and there are two reports on item 29. A motion is required on that one.
Okay, I will call 25 special. Ms. Perry, which one? I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Item 24 is actually in Council District 9, and if it's more efficient, we can continue the item and get it correctly labeled.
Do you want to just, we can just amend it?
Okay.
Okay, we'll just do a journal correction on that, so we don't need to call it special. Mr. Parks?
Just want to make a technical correction on item 26. The committee report states that this should go into the state legislative program. It should be the federal.
Federal, okay.
And also, just to ask that we move both reports on 29.
Okay. There's no objection. We'll move the reports on 29, 26. We'll make that correction as well. Ms. Gruel? Number 18, the tax allocation bonds for exposition in University Park?
Number 28, I apologize.
Number 20?
28. 28?
28, gotcha.
Sorry.
For Ms. Gruel, number 28. Other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's go ahead and let's take the balance, please. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved, as corrected and as moved. Yes, Mr. Rosendahl?
Fourth with.
Okay, there's no objection. We will send 8 fourth with. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 30 through 42. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, there's no objection to consideration. Those are before us. We do have cards on a couple. Let's see, I'm sorry, actually, we do not have cards on this batch. Do we have any from Van Nuys? Nope, okay, we'll open and close the public hearings on those. Mr. Parks?
We have 17, 18, 19, fourth with.
Yeah, I will do those just after this. Any specials, Mr. Smith?
And 31.
And 31. You want to call that special, or you want that fourth with?
I'm sorry, I thought we just voted already.
No, no, we haven't voted on it.
Fourth with, after.
Okay, gotcha. Any other specials, colleagues? Not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved without objection. We'll send 31 fourth with, and if there's no objection to sending 17, 18, and 19 fourth with, that will be the order as well. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are on the supplemental agenda. Item number 43 is the veto message.
Let's call that special.
And that would, next item is item number 44, and that's an item notice for public hearing. It's a finding of public convenience and necessity in Council District 9, and a motion is required to either grant or deny the application.
Ms. Perry?
I just wanted to ask for 43A and then...
Oh, wait, before, we called 43 special. We're on 44. It's in your district. Did you want to move, it's a public convenience of necessity for off-site consumption on Hope Street? You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move that. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 45 through 59. 10 votes are required for consideration.
I'm sorry, these are for not?
Correct, public hearings have not been held.
Okay, we do have cards then on 46, and we have on 59, so we'll call those special. Yes, Mr. Weiss?
On item 46, could we just, on 46L, I just want to make a verbal motion to amend the hours there from 4:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Okay, going a little longer. Any other specials, colleagues, on those? On the rest, we'll open and close the public hearings, and on the balance, if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. That'll take us back to public comment, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Now it's time for public comment. We'd like to start with Donna Pearman out in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Oh, no. Would you like to start with Donna out now?
We're just awaiting the video connection with Van Nuys, if you can sit tight. All right, Ms. Pearman? Can you hear us? Ms. Pearman, can you hear us out there? If not, we'll make, okay, I think we do not have that audio connection. We'll make sure that she knows. We'll go in here next to Michael Carrion, and we'll come back to Ms. Pearman. Good morning.
Morning. My name is Michael Carrion. I'm from the 14th district, and I'm here with some disturbing news here. I got a policy, the street trimming policy, that's from the city of Los Angeles, from a chief, George Gonzalez, chief forester. In some of the statements he makes is really appalling. He states that the tree facilities, the trees on city facilities are only serviced in an emergency basis. A tree can be there for 50 years before it's serviced. He goes on to say that we have the largest urban forest in the city of Los, in the world, yet we only have $12.2 million to clean those trees. We've had the same thing since, we had .1 million dollars more year in '99. We're spending $18 per tree when the rest of the county is spending $25 per tree. We call ourselves number one in a lot of things, but yet, when it comes to the urban tree forest, we're in neglect of it. This forester goes on to state that the city has enough trees that when the mayor plants his next million trees, he doesn't know where they're going to go. Who is going to pay for these million trees? I asked my councilman, when the mayor comes up with this, please don't put any in our community. The trees are dying and falling, and they've been on a 10 to 12-year cycle before they're trimmed. I had a palm tree fall five feet from my grandson, a palm branch, a large one. I guarantee you, gentlemen, if my grandson gets hurt, you will heal a whole of a hell of a lot more for me. These trees are dangerous, and it is neglect on the part of this city. You want to plant more? Find out who's going to pay for the maintenance first. Neglect!
Thank you. We'll try Van Nuys, if we've been able to contact Ms. Pearman. Let's try that one more time, see if, Ms. Pearman, are you ready to speak out in Van Nuys?
Can you hear me out there?
We can hear you. That's beautiful. Thank you.
City council, I still can't hear you, but hopefully you can hear me. Please, on Fridays, do public comment and city business before presentations, because people don't get to speak. City council, I was going to yell at you for passing look-good, hard-to-enforce dumb laws like the ban on smoking in parks, but now looks I'll have to put that on hold and appeal for your help. Not for me, but for 22 families in Van Nuys. Miriam gave Mr. Cardenas the maps to give to you, who will be talked to, into, congealed, swindled into moving, so their homes will be torn down and mated into elementary school. Miriam and I went to a meeting done by LAUSD. Believe me, that room was packed by families who did not want to leave the city. There are vacant fields and vacant buildings, but LAUSD doesn't really doesn't want to look at it. They want eminent domain. I feel they should have to bring this by City Council for approval, or hopefully disapproval. Miriam told me that eminent domain was meant to use after the war, like Europe did after World War II. The City Council, if you help, your names will go down as wonderful congresspeople. They'll praise your names. A neighborhood will be saved. Mr. Cardenas, incentive council, please get on the ball. LAUSD should not use eminent domain. A neighborhood, make LAUSD first become by you. Let those people in Van Nuys come to appeal their positions, and please don't rubber stamp it. Close the roll, tabulate, devote 12 ayes. And I would also like to say, I still mad about the ban on smoking in parks, because who's going to enforce it? The cops are needed to contact gang members and child snatchings, and how are you going to inform the public? But maybe you don't want to inform the public, because you want money for the city. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You look handsome again. Oh, I can hear you now.
It's kind of cute to say, thank you. Chuck Tenon is our next speaker, and then Arnold Sacks will be next here in City Council Chambers. Good morning.
Good morning, councilmembers. Wendy Gruel, President Garcetti. I'm here on a sad note today to speak on behalf of some recently evicted tenants on West Magnolia Boulevard in Valley Village. It was a huge disappointment to the affected tenants in our two buildings in Valley Village that our councilmember's office and staff did little or nothing to minimize the blow of the loss of affordable housing and the displacement of tenants that were forced out of their homes on our street. Recently, the tenants in a row of six buildings on our street were forced out, but this does not give the developer the right in our two buildings to demoralize or intentionally inflict stress on the affected tenants that cried out for months for help in a time of need and support from our councilmember District 2 for our two buildings. Developers may have the right to do what they want with their property, but that does not mean it gives them the right to play with human lives and emotions and destroy a good neighborhood and destroys people's lives with inconsistent and statements in bad faith that were unnecessary. It was sad to see my neighbors and friends that lived in two buildings for many years crying and stressed and forced out of their homes. They left with dignity, but they resented anger towards the irrational and cruel developer named Gary Scheffel, who had previously expressed a hatred for tenants with absolutely no compassion. The developer was petty. The tenants, he did not help the tenants relocate. In fact, he charged an 83-year-old lady that was blind two days of rent because she was two days late in trying to move out when there were 20 vacant apartments sitting there for months and three tenants needing a stove for months he wouldn't fix. He wouldn't fix the roof. He wouldn't fix the termite problem. If it's all about development rights, he got his way, but you cannot deny the community's rights in putting infrastructures, a storm drain, widening a substandard...
Thank you, Mr. Tenon. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks. Good morning, Ms. Sacks.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you very much. Just two items, I know they've been on the agenda, and they've had public hearings. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend the committee hearing meetings, the committee meeting hearings. Numbers 21, 22, 23, and 24 regard leasing agreements that the city is entering into being overseen by the GSD Department, General Services Department, and I just was wondering if the General Services Department oversaw the lease agreement at Lawa that allows ATS to lease city property without the city getting any funding for it. And then items number 17, 18, 19, and 20 regard issuance of city bonds, and since Councilman Padilla is no longer here to be a watchdog over the issuance of the city bonds, I was wondering that the total bonds issued is $43.5 million. There's $159,000 for bond council, $91,000 for bond disclosure fees, and $67,500 for financial advice. Yet, when the bonds for the city, the police department were issued, none of these extra fees... fees were included in any of the disclosure facts. And also, when the bonds for Lawa, the expansion of Tom Bradley Airport were issued, none of those fees were issued there. In addition, the bonds, as the bond amounts decrease, the fees involve increase. That just doesn't seem to make sense, and it doesn't seem to be very good, make very good economic sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, for the record, those items are on the agenda, and there was a public hearing already, and he should not be speaking on items that were, that are on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. Oscar Johnson's our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Oscar Johnson. I'm a citizen of the city of Los Angeles, and I'm an activist for the homeless on Skid Row downtown Los Angeles. And I have a very big vendetta against our police department. On the March tenth, in front of the midnight mission between hours of two o'clock and two thirty P.M., undercover police, undercover police car hit and killed African-American homeless male. This is another unsolved murder. But it's something going on between the district attorney and the police department that they can't find, can't come together and try to solve more murders that involve African-American peoples in the city of Los Angeles. Ninety percent of the murders is unsolved in the city of Los Angeles between African-American people. And then they got this, and we want to promote the death penalty. We want the death penalty for senseless killing, for senseless shooting on the offense in the city of Los Angeles, especially with this game thing. You got Conner Rice and Jim Matt with that police mission stuff, talking about they train the game, bring the gangs together instead of them disseminating the game, because they are making money off other people's interest with their game. They get eighty million dollars a year for no result to fight games. And that's wrong for government to give government money. But it seems as though that's the same race giving the same race money to be over another race. And that is unconstitutional, what's going on in Los Angeles today with our city government and the police department. And with the police department, they follow me almost daily. But if they can find me, they should be able to find what they should be finding in the street if they've been put in that position for to uphold the law and protect the citizens of Los Angeles. And the MTA bus begin to be a bus unsafe to ride on. We have overcrowded condition on the MTA bus, and our senior citizens say they're afraid to ride on the MTA bus. We should have more security and peace from the people who represent us in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Candido Morris is our next speaker. And then after that will be Don Garza.
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers. I had to leave early on Friday, but I wanted to welcome Richard Alarcon back. I was here, Richard, in ninety-three when you first took that seat. I was here when you left in ninety-seven, and here I am in two thousand and seven, ninety-eight, whenever it was, ninety-eight. Welcome back. You have an opportunity, sir. You have a second chance, and I hope that you have, you do the best for the community. And I hope, I hope you do great things for your community. I also wanted to welcome back the mayor and those of you that went to Washington. There's a lot of criticism about those travels that you take to Washington, but what they don't realize is we need those federal funds. We need those federal funds for our C.D., community development. We need it for the neediest of those in our city. We need it for the federal funding that we get for law enforcement. We received one hundred and seventy-five thousand for the Van Nuys Community Court, according to Councilman Carden. Two weeks ago, we now have funding for Van Nuys Boulevard, so hopefully we'll see the revitalization of Van Nuys Boulevard. So for those who criticize, I just want you to know that we need those federal funds. Without them, this city would be in danger. Friday was also a very special event because of the women that were here, the pioneer women that were honored. These women were unbelievable. Each one of them was greater than the other. It was absolutely, and that, and Ms. Hahn, now we know where you get your, from your father. You were exactly like your father. We're very lucky to have you. But I would just say that these women did it for one thing, for love of their city and for love of their community. So I hope that we recognize more of these ladies in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Our next speaker is Don Garza. Then we'll go back out to Van Nuys for Sharon Brewer.
Good morning, City Council. Good morning, City of Los Angeles. Good morning, Senor Councilmember Richard Alarcon. Why wasn't I invited on Friday? I'm the town crier. Town crier gets no respect. But, Senor Alarcon, I feel that everybody on this City Council, as a citizen, rest assured, one day I will find something to yell at you about. So I got to treat everybody the same, everybody. So maybe, God knows, I'll find something. Your mustache, I don't know. But ladies and gentlemen, I'm just here to say it's a wonderful time in the city. Mr. Zine, we're here to, I'm here to, you know, unofficially today, to thank the mayor, Jan Perry, Jose Wezar, all of you people, and the CRA that supported SRO Housing Corporation, My Landlord, and Central City Skid Row. We're going to be coming in a group hopefully next week. Make sure there's some food here for us, that we're going to thank all of you. But there's other exciting news. We're going to have a fundraiser on the twenty-eighth. I'm expecting all of you to be there. There's going to be, it's in September, so put it on your, on your list. But I just came here to say good morning. Welcome, Senor Alarcon. We love you, Janice Hahn. And yes, the mayor and all of you guys that went up there to Washington, D.C. I deal a lot in the homelessness issue, but I got to tell you, if you're bringing billions of dollars for economic development, that brings local money to solve the homelessness issues, because you can't count on the federal government to do it. So welcome, Senor Alarcon. And let's see you guys continue to help those of those people on the street. And I am the town crier for real, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garza, and thank you for the equal treatment. We appreciate it. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. April first, two thousand and seven, Persian New Year, Lake Balboa. Monday, April second, the Daily News has an article on page four. It mentions twenty thousand in attendance. Fact, inside the restricted area, there were thirteen regular chemical toilets, one hand sink. Free area, ten regular toilets, one handicapped, two hand sinks. Needed at least fifty toilets, and ten percent had to be handicapped for a crowd of ten thousand. The existing restrooms were used. The permit said that they were not to be used. Fact, there were over sixty booths. Permit stated a number at twenty. Fact, the traffic on Balboa was a mess. The traffic, the DOT officers and the Rangers were having a hard time dealing with all the traffic that was there. There were only two people taking the money, which made a line for the people that had to stand in line. A letter's been sent from a concerned citizen to Ron Berkowitz, Valley Region, addressing some of the concerns that he observed on that day, and they have been copied to John McCree, Linda Levitan at C.D. Six, and Jose Canajo. And this is just to let C.D. Six know that there is a letter that's being sent. Also, Tom LeBange, a copy of this letter's also been sent to you to possibly have in front of your committee.
You have thirty seconds. My apologies about the clock there.
Okay.
Don't worry.
I just noticed. It's, the thing is, it was really, it's outgrown its usefulness at the park, and the fees that were charged were not in line with what they should have been. And there'll be more. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Sorry about the clock. We will get on that right away. Marion Daniels is our last speaker here in City Council chambers. Ms. Daniels, if you'd like to come forward. Good morning. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is, as you already have. I'm here to speak on behalf of working poor property owners. I'm one little lady with one house behind my house. I worked ever since I was twelve years old, never received any public assistance, tried to make a living so I could take care of myself in my old age. I purchased a piece of property where there's two on a lot. The little house that I'm renting draws an income of only four fifty per month. The tenants are asking for relocation, and property is being destroyed faster than I can fix it up. I'm here before the council today to ask for just and reasonable ordinances for small property owners like me. I'm not a C.E.O. I don't run a business. I have one little house. The yearly income from that house is five thousand four hundred. If I have to pay eight thousand five hundred dollars in relocation, I will have to sell my home and try to start all over again. What I'm asking the council to consider is do not judge all of us in the same bucket. I know there are slum lords, and there are bad landlords, but I'm asking you to consider the good landlords who do not have all the resources.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels.
And as I leave you, as lawmakers, I ask you to all read Isaiah, chapter ten, verse one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Daniels. We appreciate your testimony today. That closes our general public comment. If we can take up the first item, please.
Mr. President, item number seven is confirmation of Commissioner Ms. Mary Barrientos to the Quality and Productivity Commission.
Okay. We can ask our commissioner nominee to come forward to the table? And this came through which committee?
Audits and Governmental Efficiency.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Mr. Wezar for Ms. Barrientos.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and welcome, Ms. Barrientos, and thank you. Colleagues, Mr. Zine and I heard Ms. Barrientos in the Audits and Governmental Efficiency Committee. She brings a lot of experience to this commission, having served before on other commissions. And also, she does wonderful work in her volunteer time working at a homeless shelter. Can you tell us a little bit more about that and the work you've been doing in the community and what you hope to bring to the commission?
Thank you very much. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. The program probably you've mentioned is the etiquette program, educational program that we introduced as I was a commissioner in public housing under Riordan, which continues today, and we had the full support of City Council in the year two thousand and three. The program was such a success with public support, private business, funding, and City Councilmen, that we took many of our students and residents to Washington, D.C. and to the White House. So that is probably the program you're talking, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your willingness to serve on this commission. We enjoyed talking to you in committee. And colleagues, I would ask for your unanimous support on what we see as someone who's going to truly add value to this commission. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate this honor.
Thank you. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to acknowledge your young daughter, who's not young anymore, well, she's still young, relative to the age I remember her when she was just a little girl, and now she's twenty-three years old. Welcome to City Council. I'm not embarrassing you too much. Twenty-three is young. Jack Weiss says twenty-three is young. Okay. Well, I agree, twenty-three is young. But I want to welcome you to City Hall also, along with your friend. I know that your commission position, Quality and Productivity, deals with the service of the city, how we deliver services to the communities of Los Angeles, the personnel involved from the different departments, your previous experience, housing, and you were on that commission for a number of years under the Riordan administration, so welcome you back. I know you've got the dedication and love for the city. Another Valley resident, mayor is appointing to a commission for the city of Los Angeles, so congratulations. And you're going to be joining some other commissioners on that particular commission who are very committed to the quality and productivity of city employees. So congratulations, and welcome back to the City Commission.
Thank you. It's an honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Anybody else wishing to be heard? We want to thank you for putting yourself forward for service, and with that, let's make it official. Please open the roll, Madam Clerk. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner Barrientos. Please, a round of applause for our new commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, the next item is item number five, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. I'd like to invite our first speaker, Stan Goldstein, forward, and then Rena Letty will be next. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for your time, Council. I'm against this proposal. I'm a property owner in the area of Zone One of the proposal. I've prepared a written statement, which I'd like made a permanent part of the record of this hearing. And basically, the reason I'm against it is I looked at the engineer's report, and basically, the report looked to me to be very hollow in its content and doesn't really explain why the crime or the pollution of the area is increasing. And that's because the city has not enforced the zoning laws thereafter. They changed the zoning some twenty years ago, and therefore, we have a lot of non-conforming businesses in the area, and it makes it almost impossible for owners of property to rent to conforming businesses if they're surrounded by non-conforming businesses, such as auto body shops and tattoo parlors and what have you. So I feel that, I think the council should hold up approval of this, what seems to me to be a work program for some company, and study this proposal out and see where they really should be spending the money and the time and the effort right now to solve the problems there, and then I'd be more than willing to approve something like this. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, sir. Rena Letty is next. Rena Letty, excuse me.
My name is Rena Letty. I'm a consultant with Urban Place Consulting Group, speaking on behalf of our client, the Community Redevelopment Agency, and the North Hollywood Property Owner Steering Committee, which we've been working with for over two years to investigate whether a business improvement district would work in North Hollywood and whether there's interest. And in fact, we've had a great response from the property owners within that district. More than fifty percent of those property owners are in favor of doing something, creating a business improvement district, and looking forward to approving it in order to start some, some great maintenance and safety programs in the North Hollywood district. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes our public comment on item number five. Any councilmembers wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, the ballot tabulation actually will be on the agenda tomorrow, and the only, the council action today was to close the hearing.
Okay. We will close that hearing then, and that will, the ballot, the ballot tabulation will be tomorrow, so we will take that up again, and thank you for your public testimony. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number six, and that was also called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Ms. Perry, did you have?
Mr. President, if six doesn't take too long, I wanted to call item forty-three out of order, since we're all here.
Okay.
On the supplemental agenda.
All righty, yeah. We've just got three public speaker cards. It's just for the public hearing, and then we'll move to that. Okay? If there's not any objection.
No.
James Paul will be our first speaker, and then Carmen Salendong, and then James Gibson. Mr. Paul, welcome.
Thank you, President, and councilmembers. My name is Jim Paul. I'm representing NICS Check Cashing. We're in the Pico redevelopment area, and we are opposed to this assessment. It's approximately three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, and this assessment is to provide us with security and some cleaning along this corridor. I think it's an excessive amount of money to be spending for that. And number two, I think that I, we need to actually have the landlords be assessed for this. We already, in our CAM costs, have expenses in our leases, and with these leases, we already pay for a majority of this service already. As a tenant, we may move in the future, and it will do nothing but hurt our business, but I think it ought to be passed on uniformly through the landlords. The other thing I would suggest is that, before we move any further on it, Councilwoman Hahn, who I happen to be from San Pedro, has done a wonderful job of coming together with the community and partnering with the city to do just this very thing, and has done a great job in the city of San Pedro. And I would like to suggest that we get along. As a tenant, we may move in the future, and it will do nothing but hurt our business, but I think it ought to be passed on uniformly through the landlords. The other thing I would suggest is that before we move any further on it, Councilwoman Hawn, who I happen to be from San Pedro, has done a wonderful job of coming together with the community and partnering with the city to do just this very thing, and has done a great job in the city of San Pedro, and I would like to suggest that we get along with her and help out with this situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Carmen Salendong is next, and then James Gibson will follow that. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Carmen Salendong, and I'm a business owner on Pico Boulevard, five-three-seven-three West Pico Boulevard, and I'm here to oppose the new ordinance that's being passed to us. First off, this ordinance is being without general consensus. I have been leasing since April of two thousand and four. No one has approached me that there will be a new ordinance for Pico BID. Number two, without an existing owners' association for Pico Boulevard, I think it is not proper for us business owners to give, you know, a special levy when we are not approached or there's no organization for the businesses on Pico. There's three hundred and seventy-four businesses, according to the Unique Speak Consulting Agency that accounted all the businesses from Pico to, I mean, La Brea to Crescent Heights. I think this ordinance is going to push us more out of business than promote business on Pico Boulevard. And then they would like to levy us for the year two thousand and seven. The first quarter has passed, and I think by the time we can all sit down on this, it would be half the year. I think this should be moved another time when everybody has voted for a special levy on Pico Boulevard. So I've got, Mr. Wesson, I faxed your office this recommendation, and I'd like you to really, really take a look at it. In the last couple days, I've walked up and down Pico Boulevard, and none of the businesses that I spoke, and I've got opposition of like over fifty that didn't know what we are doing among this one. So I'd like you to move in and help us here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Salendong. James Gibson is our last speaker on this item. Welcome, Mr. Gibson.
Hi, I'm James Gibson. I'm the office manager with American Plaza Incorporated. Now, the problem with this assessment is we have four different businesses on Pico Boulevard, and I was doing the calculations of the assessments, and it's over ten thousand dollars. Now, that's a heavy hit for, they may be four different businesses, but they're still a small businesses. And I mean, we're already paying federal tax, state tax, city tax, and frankly, you say improvements, but I can't see where there are going to be any improvements for the money. And frankly, our business, Mr. Wesson, is small, but it supports a lot of families, a lot of children, and this money could do our businesses a lot of harm, because when you're a small business and you have to take up, pay these kinds of money, somebody's going to lose their job. And I don't believe anybody here in the council chamber wants to see somebody lose their job, because that hurts all of us. So I think this should really be considered, and I would ask you, Mr. Wesson, to do what you could, to help the small, because all the businesses on Pico are small businesses, but they still support a lot of families and children, and this should be taken into consideration, because if I have to pay out another ten thousand dollars a year, somebody's getting fired. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. That closes our general public comment on this. Mr. Wesson? I'm sorry, we're going to continue until tomorrow? That's the public hearing open? I'm sorry. We keep the public hearing open until tomorrow, correct?
This is what I'd like to do, Mr. Garcetti. The staff and I had a long discussion last evening, where related to this issue. And what I would suggest that we do is that there needs to be a little more dialogue, because I think at the end of the day, that this could be a good thing, but I wouldn't want to rush this, and I never got into this business to try to put people out of work. Pico Boulevard is very important to me personally, and I think important to the district and the city of Los Angeles. We're trying to attract more small business to that area. Plus, I go, that's my favorite French bakery, and when I heard you speak, I listened, so this is what I'm going to recommend, that we continue this item for a minimum of ninety days, that we have discussions within the community, that I will discuss, not discuss, that I will set up hearings where we can have a give and take, and at the end of the day, hopefully, we can find a peace that all of us can live with. So I would think, Mr. President, given the concerns that I've had by the merchants on Pico Boulevard, that this would be a fair compromise. So with that, I recommend that this be continued for at least ninety days. And thank you guys for coming down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think without objection. Mr. Zine, you had pressed your button. Are you one to speak?
Yes, Madam President. I just wanted to acknowledge briefly, we had a community cleanup Saturday. About a hundred and fifty people showed up, students, et cetera, cleaned up in three areas in the third district. I want to acknowledge someone in the audience who showed up with his power, power, what is that called? Power blaster, showed up with, are those your children? Stepchildren, with Candido Merez, who showed up in the third district out of Van Nuys to come help clean up the West San Fernando Valley. I just want to acknowledge you publicly that we appreciate that effort and all the people who helped clean up the West San Fernando Valley this Saturday. I know Big Sunday's coming up, which is another big cleanup, but I was so surprised to see you coming in with your truck, with your power blaster there to help out, so we really appreciate it. Just want to acknowledge you, Candido. We thank you, and the community thanks you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. And that was related to the, and I'm kidding you. Thank you. So without objection, it'll be continued ninety days. And Madam President, just for council's information, the new date is July sixth. July sixth, okay. Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk. Madam President, I believe there's a request to take item forty-three out of order. Forty-three, okay. Who's forty-three was called? That was Councilmember Perry. Okay. Ms. Perry, we do have speaker cards. Has this had a, do you want to hear public comment?
Yes, please.
Is this the item that's?
Yes, please.
First?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to call up the following individuals. Arnold Sacks, John Whitaker, Paul Rohr. Mr. Sacks? Okay, I don't see Mr. S, oh, there he is. No, thank you.
Good morning again, council members. Thank you very much. I'd just like to be sure that the, that this is, I'm not sure, this motion hasn't been passed because the mayor vetoed it, and this is a hearing to override the mayor's veto, but if the city council decides to enter into a new motion, I just hope that the same fiasco doesn't occur that occurred with the song and dance routine regarding the restaurant workers, the work, the business district out by the airport where the hotel workers were offered a living wage, and then the ordinance was passed, and then the second ordinance, which was basically the same, was also offered, and now it ends up in court with nothing being done for a year. I hope the city attorney is aware of this and that if this ordinance goes through, or there's no ordinance that goes through, and it's changed, we don't end up in court over it. Thank you very much.
John Whitaker.
Good morning. My name is John Whitaker. I'm a partner with the downtown law firm of D.L.A. Piper. I specialize in real estate and land use law. I was one of the members of the task force that responded to the city council request to review the previous T4 ordinance and to come back with the, a new ordinance adapted to today's environment to particularly emphasize residential mixed-use development, and that's the ordinance that you have, that you passed previously and is being considered today. Again, like most ordinance, this ordinance was a result of much compromise among the members of the committee, the task force. The task force represented the city council, the CLA's office, the CRA, city council office, and the development community. It is most critical above all that there be certainty to developers and of projects, in a high-density projects in downtown, they're investing millions and millions, tens of millions of dollars in designs to create the projects, and they cannot afford to do that and wait till the end to see what the actual cost is going to be. So thus, an ordinance of this type is critical to creating certainty for the developers and their lenders. So I ask you to strongly consider the compromise, the solution that was put forward by the city council office and the mayor's office to resolve the issue at hand and to move this ordinance forward as soon as possible. Thank you.
Paul Rohr, followed by Carol Schatz, Russell Brown, and then Don Garza. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Paul Rohr, Mungar Tolson Olsen, and I'm here to speak in favor of this motion. For the better part of two years, we have participated in a T4 working group that included representatives of the planning department, the CRA, the CLA, the city council office, and other downtown stakeholders. Our working group performed a comprehensive study of the city's current T4 ordinance and considered how it could be revised so that we could streamline the process, assure that public benefit payments are tied directly to land value, and guarantee that all monies received are actually used to provide public benefits. The passage of the T4 ordinance is important to the future of the city, because the T4 ordinance will facilitate the creation of elegant density using smart growth principles, because it will create jobs and housing while providing literally tens of millions of dollars for affordable housing, homeless services, parks, and other public benefits. We are at an uncertain time. The nationwide housing slump could stall or even stop the still fragile downtown transition into a city that's really a twenty-four-hour city. Moreover, through inaction, we could squander this opportunity to provide substantial public benefits to our city's most needy residents. Councilwoman Perry's motion provides an excellent solution, which will allow for the passage of the T4 ordinance and the future oversight of T4 transfers by the council and the mayor. Consequently, I respectfully ask the council to vote for the motion and to vote for the passage of the T4 ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Schatz.
Good morning, members. We, Central City Association strongly urges you to support the agreement solution that has been arrived on this issue of the transfer of floor area ratio. It is a critical issue, as you've heard from previous speakers, for our burgeoning downtown renaissance. The existing ordinance, as you know, is cumbersome, has not worked, has not been a benefit to developers, so it has not been used. So this working group was created with all parties in mind to create something that would work. In the meantime, we have developers, not many, but some, who are very interested in using this mechanism to go higher in the part of the city that wants the density, because many of you in your own districts know that your residents and neighborhoods don't. We want it. It belongs here, and we want to be able to use it while we still have a market that is interested in building. All of you have lived long enough to know that we don't know what will happen with the market at any given time. We had a slowdown last year. It is beginning to pick up, and we really hope that we can capitalize on the momentum that's been created and move this forward. We think it is a balance that represents all of the interests, the public, the private sector, the city's interests, and we hope that you will today indicate your support for what has been hammered out at a lot of pain to a lot of people. Thank you very much.
Russell then followed by Don Garza.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Russell Brown. I'm president of the Downtown L.A. Neighborhood Council. I'm also chair of RAD L.A., which is a residents' association of Downtown L.A., and chair of the Historic Core Neighborhood Block grant. We approve of this clarification and the solution to trying to help get this program back on track. This program basically has been a program that's been in place that's been cumbersome and not easy to understand and use. We think this is a great asset to help continue to spur downtown renaissance. The program gives flexibility for significant review, including mayoral review. It's not uncommon that our planning committee hears six to seven liquor license and restaurants, and three or four high rises a month. It takes two or three years to get to the advanced planning stage and another three or four years to build. So it's very important that the mayor and all the city departments register on the front end. We think this is a great way to create assets for downtown, for green space, open space, transportation issues, and workforce and affordable housing. We work closely with the bid, the residents. I'm also speaking on behalf of Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council, and they approve this. We look forward to this being one more great program for downtown, just like L.A. Live, Grand Avenue, L.A. River, the adaptive reuse, and now the transfer of air rights to make a great community downtown. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, City Council. I exhort you on behalf of the residents that need roofs over their heads, not just those that are going to be moving into these condos that these developers want to build. Like many of these speakers, downtown Los Angeles yearns for the density. It's destiny. I would exhort you to side with Ms. Perry and her compromise on what we're about to do, but, you know, it makes me very sad when I see this group of people, especially the mayor and others, I don't know what the deal was, but we can't stall this anymore. We, as you saw, SRO Housing Corporation didn't make the rules for CDBG funding. We've lost money from CDBG funding. I heard that there was a, in this T4 issue, a trust fund, and some of that money would be going towards the development of low-income, permanent supportive housing. We need to get this thing on track. We need to do it as quickly and efficiently as possible. We cannot delay the destiny and the economic engine, which is downtown. We want density. This is an incentive for density. Thank you very much. Please, I exhort you, please, I exhort you, vote on this, because I stand by Ms. Perry when she knows, she knows what she's doing, believe me.
We believe you, Don. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Town Prior, for your affirmation of my skills. Thank you. I appreciate it. While I am getting ready to speak, if Mr. Miller and Mr. Gutierrez and Sharon Seedorf Cardenas, they could come to the table. With the assistance of the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst, the city attorney, Council President Garcetti, various council members, and mayoral staff, we have worked collectively to prepare a response to matters regarding council and mayoral oversight of the T4 ordinance. The new T4 ordinance was adopted unanimously by the city council on March seventh, two thousand and seven. The new ordinance clarifies issues related to the sale of T4, general community benefits from the sale of T4, and seeks to mitigate the impact of an increase in density in an urbanized downtown and in the neighborhoods that surround downtown Los Angeles. That includes Mr. Reyes's district, Mr. Park's district, Mr. Huizar's district, and gets us pretty close to Mr. Garcetti's district. We were asked to reconsider the language in the ordinance as it pertained to the mayor's role in the application of the ordinance, and a number of members in the council expressed concern and an interest in finding a solution to the question. I felt that it was extremely important for the ordinance to reflect the role of the council as a policymaking body and the mayor as set forth in the city charter and the CRA oversight ordinance, because I believe the current draft is a sound process of checks and balances. And I have a verbal amendment, which I will read into the record, and it would amend section fourteen point five point seven A of the substitute ordinance by adding the following language to the end of the paragraph. "The agency shall forward a copy of the application and transfer plan to the mayor's office," the to the mayor's office, the city council office for the city council district in which the receiver site is located, and the chief legislative analyst within seven days of receiving the completed application." This agreement made will add language to the T-FAR ordinance as it pertains to the mayor's participation. This agreement does not change the T-FAR ordinance as to substance. The substitution language in the ordinance provides the mayor an opportunity to review council approvals of projects under the T-FAR ordinance while ensuring transparency and broad participation by all stakeholders in the development of projects. This is important as the council, by its adoption of the ordinance and by the mayor's concurrence, agree that the T-FAR ordinance is a solid piece of legislation and good policy. The substitute motion that I've introduced, if adopted, will solidify the agreement made and recognize the 18 months of hard work that was done to update this ordinance. The city attorney has added new language to the T-FAR ordinance, which is before us today as part of the continuation agenda. This T-FAR ordinance is an important piece of legislation, and it is one in a series of land use policies that I, as some others have, have been working on. T-FAR policy is not about who is in office. It is a policy that honors a process. It is a policy and a process that will be in place for a long time to come, and I'm going to come back and ask all council members to vote yes or affirmatively on the adoption of the substitute motion. But before we get to that point, I'd like to ask our city attorney to review for the benefit of the council members, again, the amended language and how we reached this draft today. I don't have her.
Sharon or Peter. Hold my time.
You're a couple minutes over, but we'll hold your time, Ms. Perry. Give you more. I think you get six minutes, though, I think. So you've only, I think you've only had five, so.
Sharon Seedorf Cardenas, City Attorney's Office. The amendments from the ordinance that had originally been sent to the mayor are the following, and they were based upon the motion that was proposed earlier. It allows, it amends Section 14.5.5, which is early consultation session, to have the early consultation with the agency staff include the Department of City Planning, the mayor's office, and the city council office for the city council district in which the receiver site is located, and the chief legislative analyst. That's early consultation. Then, under Section 14.5.6a and 14.5.7a, both of those are the application processes, one for commercial industrial and one for residential. It would provide that once a completed application is submitted to the agency, that the agency shall forward the copy of that application and the proposed transfer plan to the mayor's office, the city council office for the receiver, where the receiver site is located, and the chief legislative analyst within seven days of receiving that completed application. In addition, Section 14.5.6, dealing with commercial industrial projects, the provision was amended to add for review by the mayor. It would provide that once the council acts to approve or conditionally approve a project, that the files be transmitted to the mayor. He would have 10 days then to approve or disapprove the proposed transfer. If he failed to act within the 10 days, then it would be deemed approved. If he did take an action to disapprove it, it would be returned to the council for them to have 60 days to override the mayor's vote. That same provision appears in Section 14.5.6 for commercial industrial projects and 14.5.7 for residential projects. And that's the sum total of the amendments.
Mr. Miller, did you have anything you wanted to add? Hold my time.
No, I think that the proposed amendments do provide the council offices, my office, with information early in the process, as well as the mayor's office, of course, and does provide the mayor's office with a review on council approvals.
Madam Chair, I can press my button again if there are other speakers?
No, no, there are no other speakers, Ms. Perry. Like I said, you have six minutes, so you do have more time.
Okay, great. All right, so before us today is a substitute motion, and as I indicated earlier, we're continuing Agenda Items 43a, 43b1 until May 1, 2007. We have a substitute ordinance in place of 43b, which will be considered tomorrow and hopefully adopted tomorrow, and I just ask for an aye vote on what is before you today with the substitute language.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. We do have now, Mr. Huizar has pushed his button.
Great. Thank you very much. And just to let people know, and the public and the colleagues, that I've introduced an amended motion that would ask for a report back on several items that I think would be worth discussing in public about the impacts on, if, should we make some changes. I want to thank everybody who actually brought us up to this point, 18 months of hard work. And when I first got to council, Councilwoman Wendy Grill reminded me of how quickly things happen around here, but I know a lot of people put a lot of time into this, and we appreciate your hard work. But I thought it'd be important to look at several items to see how this would help the ordinance and help achieve our goals of what we're trying to do here. One of those things that I hope we could discuss is if we expand the list of public purposes for the funds. For example, the public purpose does not currently include or is missing infrastructure, public works, and public safety. And in fact, as a lot of our colleagues would note, that's probably some of the items that our constituents often ask us for, filling those potholes, trimming those trees, items like that. I think if we include those items and we have a discussion around it, it would actually give us more flexibility about how we could improve the areas that we're intending to improve. The other item I hope to explore and discuss, and not necessarily push, but just discuss, because I think it'd be worthwhile discussion, is if we were to expand the area for receiving the funds from two miles to three, what that would capture, what that would mean, and how we would benefit from doing that. That would be another item. I think that there, again, it would give us more flexibility as to the areas we are intending to improve. And as we see Los Angeles, downtown Los Angeles today, continuing to grow and expand with the L.A. Live, Grand Avenue, what we're doing on Historic Core and the Arts District, I think would behoove us not to just limit ourselves to a smaller area. But that's something I think would be worth exploring in public and to see where that would get us, if in fact, the public and the stakeholders and the council would like to go that way as well. And finally, I thought it might be interesting to explore expanding the Public Benefits Committee, if that was helpful. I know a lot of people have talked about this for some time. I did not want to slow us down today. I would like this ordinance to go forward today. But it would be interesting to see what would happen if not only the receiver and the donor of the sites are at the table making decisions, but the actual council members whose district may affect, may be affected. So for example, if the Convention Center right now donates funding and it goes on a two-mile radius and it's in, and the receiver site is in my district, I'm at the table. But that's a two-mile radius for that receiver site, so that may affect, let's say, Garcetti's area, but Garcetti is currently not at the table. So I think it might be worth exploring what that would mean and if the council actually would want to be at the table. I'm not sure. So those are just some items that I've been thinking about as we saw this. I want to let my colleagues know, I didn't bring these up before because I didn't want to disrupt the progress, the discussions were taking place, but since we've unwrapped this gift that we saw and it's open, I think it'd be a right time to explore it, get a report back, discuss it, but do it in a very collegial manner, because I think we've done a lot to get to this point. It would not behoove any of us to disrupt what we've done up to this point. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huizar. Ms. Perry.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to move to approve the substitute ordinance with the amended language, and I hope that I, and this, I think I read this once.
Continue the, no, you didn't.
Yeah, I did. Oh, I'll read it again. Continue Agenda Items 43a and b, 43a and 43b1 until May 1, 2007. And again, we're presenting a substitute ordinance in place of 43b, which would be considered and adopted tomorrow. Okay? This is under instruction of the city attorney to read this language into the record.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. So, Madam Clerk, as we, you want to inform us as to what our first vote will be?
The first item before council is Councilmember Huizar's motion that's requesting a report back to the Plumb Committee on various items.
So the first item is Mr. Huizar's motion. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Okay. Next item.
Then, before council is Councilmember Perry's substitute that continues recommendations 43a and b to May 1, and presents the substitute ordinance, and that will be before council tomorrow for final adoption.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, is Item 25, and that was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, here we find ourselves at the same place today as we do each year, trying to honor a group of men who defended our freedoms here in the United States and around the world, but who history has bypassed. Members of the Filipino community and Filipino-American community veterans who fought in World War II, when over 65 years ago President Franklin D. Roosevelt ordered Filipino soldiers into service in the United States Armed Forces in the Far East, which was known as USA FFE, UCF, under the command of General Douglas MacArthur during World War II. More than 120,000 Filipino soldiers were trained and organized into 11 Army Divisions for the defense of the Philippines, which was then an American colony. However, after the war, the U.S. Congress bypassed these men who were promised the benefits of service in the United States Army. I have with me here a photograph that I keep on my desk of my grandfather. He was a member of the United States Army who fought in the Philippines, Salvador Garcetti. He actually was a Mexican-born, Mexican citizen. Having fought in World War II in the Philippines, he earned his United States citizenship. But unlike my grandfather, who then set in motion what has been for my family an American dream, many of these soldiers had history bypass them, many of them now in their 80s and 90s, living here in Los Angeles, living in our own communities, and they continue to fight for full veteran status in the government because the U.S. Government passed, Congress passed what was called the Recision Act, which did just that. It actually took away the benefits, the veteran support, the health care, the pensions of these brave men who saw their friends killed, saw themselves injured, and who still live with the sadness of what happened to them. They've staged hunger strikes, protested here in Los Angeles. I know Councilmember Reyes, Mr. Huizar, others have been a part of supporting these brave men in Washington, D.C. They've literally chained themselves to the White House, lobbied elected officials to gain what they deserve, full equity and justice. This is something we spoke with Congressman Filner of San Diego about, who's the sponsor, and this is the year that these men, who are literally dying as we speak, who have seen history bypass them, our own freedom rests on their shoulders and they can't even get health care. They live with the traumatic stress of World War II, some of them in the Batan March, who saw people starved to death alongside them, and we say that we will stand again with them as Senator Inoue's Senate Bill 57, the Filipino Veterans' Equity Act of 2007, is before us. And when both Houses of Congress pass it, because I feel like they will this year, and we got there last year, this president can make history by signing it. It's not a heavy cost to our national budget at a time when we've seen veterans come back from the current war that we're in and treated with some deplorable conditions. Let us not just take care of the present, but let us make right the past, and I ask you for your support today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Next speaker, Mr. Huizar.
Thank you, and I first want to thank President Garcetti for continuing to bring this to us each and every year, that we not forget the contributions that our fellow veterans have made to defending the liberties that we today enjoy in this great country. As Mr. Garcetti said, hundreds of thousands of Filipino soldiers bravely fought alongside Americans during World War II. Many of them actually fought in some of our most bloodiest battles, including the 65-mile Barron Death March, and they have made many tremendous sacrifices and suffered heavy casualties in many of those battles. Filipino veterans deserve the same rights, privileges, and benefits as American veterans of World War II, and the Filipino Veterans' Equity Act of 2007 would ensure that they receive them. The thriving Filipino community is throughout Los Angeles, and in fact, here in Los Angeles, we have one of the highest concentrations of Filipinos than anywhere in the country. I think if the city of Los Angeles stands up, we will not only be standing up for our constituents, but also standing up for an injustice that was put on these veterans, and we will correct that injustice. I want to thank again President Garcetti, and hopefully this is the year that many of these veterans receive the benefits they deserve. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl. Bill Rosendahl. Your turn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having been in Manila, in the Philippines, and knowing the commitment in World War II that the Filipino community did for the United States and supported us, and they are one of our strongest allies in the Pacific, it is justice due, it is long overdue, and we should all support this federal legislation. Filner was in town yesterday on another issue about veterans, but he's very focused on this. Makes a lot of sense for all of us to support not only the Filipino-Americans here, but the Filipinos in general, who give so much to the United States and participate in so many activities here and are part of us and the family. It's the due respect that they should be getting that they haven't gotten. Unanimous vote on that, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I also rise to support this effort. We think of the Filipino-American experience and the Filipinos during that time. No one knew better the terrain, no one understood how to deal with the enemy, any more than the folks, the indigenous, the Filipinos who lived there. It's because of their effort, we had many victories. With their support, we had many victories. So it's about time we recognize the significant role of what the Filipino was able to do for this great country at a critical time in our history. And for us to omit, to oversee, to make less what that role was at that time, as the individuals who understood the terrain, who understood the geography, who understood the weather, all that factors in in how our soldiers were able to be effective in taking out the enemy and sacrificing their own families, their own villages, their own towns in the process, since they were not the ones that were considered American soldiers, but were fighting as bravely as our American soldiers. So again, I stand in support of this effort and continue to support the Filipino community in this great effort. I want to thank Councilperson Garcetti for his tenacity in making sure we continue to raise this voice and this concern year after year. I encourage an aye vote.
Absolutely. Thank you. That matters, matters up before we vote. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Good. Thank you. And we'd like to send Madam Clerk, Number 25 and Number 26 forthwith, please. I'm sorry, 25 and 56 forthwith, please. And then next item on the agenda, please.
Next item is Item 28, and that was called special by Councilmember Grill.
Councilmember Wendy Grill.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine, I know we've had a public hearing. If I could ask that we open the public hearing, we have two speaker cards, I believe. They've been submitted.
We're looking for them right now.
Okay. Well, I know who they are, so I will ask them if they have not filled out the cards, or they're not there. We will make sure you have them. If I could, call up Lisa Sarkin and Barbara Monahan Burke.
The cards aren't here. If we got cards, we'd like to bring them forward, please.
Right. We'll make sure that they fill out those cards. I think, I'm not sure where they disappeared. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, my name is Lisa Sarkin. I represent the Studio City Residents Association on this appeal. I am here representing the more than I am here representing the more than two thousand households of the SCRA. The height of this development will adversely affect the entire neighborhood, residential neighborhood. The height is repressive, it's fifty-two feet, and it will dangerous, it will set a dangerous precedent for Studio City. We have raised many issues that the city attorney's office has rejected. Early this morning was the first time I knew about these rulings. We disagree with the city attorney regarding SB eighteen-eighteen, allowing very low-income units within this development. SB eighteen-eighteen clearly allows a ten percent set aside of units for moderate-income families, not very low income in a condominium development. The state law, as recently stated by the city attorney's office, is the only law we can use here in Los Angeles. We are not supposed to be using the draft ordinance that's been presented by the Planning Department. Please grant my appeal of this development as presented, because it is not within the state law of the SB eighteen-eighteen rulings. And if I have any time remaining, I'd like to reserve it for rebuttal. Thank you.
We have two cards I found, Lisa Sarkin and Barbara Burke.
Hello, I'm Barbara.
Excuse me, hold on a minute. City Attorney has a comment.
And this is a fair hearing item requiring that the council members heighten attention.
Go ahead, please.
I am Barbara Monahan Burke, community advocate for Studio City. I live at four-two-two-three Wilkinson Avenue. The California Ordinance SB eighteen-eighteen is the prevailing ordinance on density bonus in the city of Los Angeles. Any draft ordinance by the city of Los Angeles shall not be allowed to be used. SB eighteen-eighteen allows only moderate-income-for-sale affordable units in condominium projects. These start at ten percent. This is the intent of California SB eighteen-eighteen. Through CD Two and Wendy Gruel, Councilmember Wendy Gruel, we have asked to review the footprint of this building and architectural plans. The process has neither been timely nor transparent with both the developer. We have not received any proposed plans, and the city attorney, we received the ruling by them only early this morning, too late for research and rebuttal. The public health, safety, environment, and historical designation of the Little Brown Church in this area were not adequately addressed or mitigated, yet the Planning Department approved the MND. The fifty-two-foot height of this building is unacceptable. The Neighborhood Council even put conditions on this building, but in the process, it just says Neighborhood Council Advisory has approved this. That is not correct. The standards of many stakeholders in Studio City shall not, shall not, should not be at the expense of just the profit of this developer. The fifty-two-foot height is not necessary to include the affordable housing units in this project. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. If I could have staff come up to the table? A couple of questions, and I know this is an issue that my staff have been asking you as well regarding the density bonus and, excuse me, and the implementation of SB eighteen-eighteen. Some of the issues that we actually brought up at the previous hearing, also at the Plum Hearing. Could you please address whether the applicant used the wrong method to calculate the density bonuses? Also, are there different rules for apartments versus condominiums? And under, and maybe I'll just go with those and come back on some of the others before me, if you could hold my time, Mr. Zine.
Maya Zaitsevsky, Planning Department. What the applicant applied for was a twenty percent density bonus under SB eighteen-eighteen. They set aside five percent very low-income units, and that ended up to be three very low-income units, and they asked for one concession, which was the nine-foot increase in height. And this is consistent with SB eighteen-eighteen. They were saying that the, you can only do moderate-income units with condominium units, and that's correct. We're not disputing that. But if you're doing very low or low-income units, you can do either rental or for sale, and that's, the law provides four ways for financing these units, and it's called out in Section six-five-nine-one-five subsection C-one, and it says mortgage financing assistance programs, mortgage insurance programs, or rental subsidy programs. So, I think it's pretty clear that for very low and low-income units, you can do either for sale or for rent.
Sorry, when you talk about, in the previous sentence, you said very low was not for condos. Does that, how do they, how do you differentiate between?
No, you can do, moderate is only condominiums. If you're doing moderate-rate units, it can only be sold as condominiums. It can't be used as rental. If you're doing very low or low units, they could be either for sale or rental.
Or rental. And does eighteen, SB eighteen-eighteen require an applicant to demonstrate the need for a height incentive?
It's not, my understanding that it does. It says that if we deny the incentive, then it could only be done for certain reasons, but we didn't deny that, the concession. We approved it, so that doesn't, it's not required to prove that it's necessary. What the applicant has said is that it provides for bigger units of their for-sale units, which will allow them to sell them for a higher price, and that way it could help subsidize the cost of the other units, the three set-aside units.
And the questions raised by the two constituents and representing, could you address their issues that they raised?
Well, one of them was saying, Lisa Sarkin was saying she disagrees with the city attorneys that you, regarding the moderate income units. I don't know if you want to address that any further, or?
No, Deputy City Attorney Ken, I agree with staff on that, on the response.
And that was the, what you just described as far as the for-sale condos and those that are?
Yes. Yeah, and then, as far as the height, like I said, that this was, they said this was necessary to provide for their market-rate units that allowed them to, if they sold them, they could provide for the very low-income units. And this was approved by the Neighborhood Council, this, the height increase, and it was discussed in the MND. So, I don't, I don't know what more to say about that, the height issue. They did try to mitigate it by having it step back where it's adjacent to the R-one uses, and so that it's not as perceivable from the rear, but...
And colleagues, this is, and I've talked to my constituents who've been very, very active on this issue, and our new members of our Neighborhood Council that we've sworn in, I think, in a couple of weeks. It's a difficult case, and particularly on, for me, on Moore Park and the, you know, giving density bonuses for that and height density for this part of Moore Park. If this was a policy question, I would be able to say, let's grant the appeal and move forward. We've had several conversations, and unfortunately, SB eighteen-eighteen took a lot of the control we have locally on some of the land use decisions, which I'm a big proponent of local control on land use decisions. And this has been a challenge with the implementation of SB eighteen-eighteen and how we in Los Angeles kind of have lost some of that control in these areas. And so, we have, I know Pepperdew with many, many questions, and Ken smiling, on this issue, both in the appeal hearings and in Plum as it's gone forward. And so, you know, the city attorney's office, even as to, even a few minutes ago, has advised us that if we don't approve this, or deny the appeal, I guess in this instance, that we'd be violating the state law in SB eighteen-eighteen. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be correct, unless the city is prepared to make findings that there's a health and safety reason why you cannot grant the concession or the incentive, but I don't understand, I understand we don't have those findings.
You researched that, that we do not have those findings?
Well, staff, if staff had those findings, obviously, they probably would have made them, but they don't have those.
Okay. And I know that there was quite a bit of dialogue in the Plum Committee hearing by Mr. Weezaar and Mr. Card, excuse me, and Miss, Mr. Weezaar, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Reyes about this issue, and trying to, and my staff was present to see if there was a way in which we could deny the appeal, and what we've been heard today, much to our chagrin. And I know that the constituents would like to see this continued, because they just got some of the answers to their questions last night, but this is the last day, unfortunately, for us to act. So, reluctantly, I think our only option, based on the city attorney's advice, is to adopt the Plum Report that's before us.
Thank you. Items now up for the vote. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item's forty-six A through M, and that was called special for cards from the public, and forty-six L was amended previously by Councilmember Weiss.
We have a Speaker Donna Perman on number forty-six.
She's in the valley.
In the valley. If you can please connect to the, there you go.
Okay, yeah, hi. I'm glad you got to this. I'm Miss Zuma Dog, by the way. When, seeing over here all these fees, when the city needs money, you make special fees for events like the Los Angeles Leather Collections, Caesar Chavez at Venice Fest, a block party in Valley Greek Festival. Is this a feel-good, hope you get re-elected measure? Where does the money come from? Will there be problems with parking? The police are needed for these events. Do we pay them overtime or give them another time off? Do we have a huge abundance of money events to pay for these events? It is revenue, but is it really benefit the local taxpayers, or just another, or certain people get a handout? So, I would look at these over again. I really don't think the city can afford this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sachs? This is on item forty-six.
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, I don't believe I put a card in for forty-six. I have one for fifty-four.
They put it in this one, so we'll wait then, Mr. Sachs. Thank you, we'll call you on item fifty-four. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item forty-six.
Forty-six.
Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Sachs, I think they had you on fifty-nine. Is that, did you call fifty-nine special? That's our next item.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. You can have the microphone. No, ma'am, I actually, I talked to Sergeant Arms about it when the items were called for vote, because it was included as an item that hadn't been heard in hearings, and I think they called it at fifty-nine, but I pointed out that I had put in a card for fifty-four, and that was the item that I'd wanted to be heard on. But I don't know if I can speak on it.
We can do that. What we will do is, we will reconsider item fifty-four to have your speaker card.
Thank you very much.
And, well, your fours and nines look the same, so make, thank you. Madam Clerk, open the roll on item fifty-nine, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. If we could reconsider item number fifty-four. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Sachs, on item fifty-four.
Very quickly, item fifty-four involves a hundred thousand dollars to District Eleven. For two cents, I can tell you the traffic is terrible. The MTA has voted not to proceed with the authorization for the, or recommended not to proceed with authorization for the Green Line Construction Authority Commission, and as far as homelessness facilities, there aren't any. And after going to the meeting, the Special Transportation Committee meeting hearing yesterday, I was wondering if the same avenues that were used by the public to form the preferential parking district, the overnight parking district, would be available to the people who need to fund, to have made available housing for the homeless and/or facilities that will be made available to the people that'll be removed once this overnight parking district becomes legalized. Where will the people who live in their cars, where will they have to, what facilities will be made available, or what percentage of the money this hundred thousand dollars will go towards providing facilities for them to have a place where they can stay or use, or be made available for their use, not, once they're, then once they're eliminated from parking on the streets of Venice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, there is a special one motion that has been presented by Councilmember Parks and seconded by Councilmember Smith, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since opposing of today's agenda, the city has received an offer to sell Figueroa Plaza to the city. However, the city has only twenty working days within which to respond to the offer. Immediate action is required to instruct several city departments to thoroughly research the offer and report back to council within the compressed timeframe. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-four point two before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you. Do you want to speak on the findings, or we'll vote on the findings? Okay, thanks, Mr. Parks. Madam Clerk, open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I just would like to move forward on this issue, that as the Budget and Finance Committee has looked over the last couple of years on how we can reduce our cost of leasing space, and we're currently at about twenty-four million dollars, we had this item before in which looked at Thick Plaza as a potential home for city bill, city resources. We have an opportunity to reevaluate the sale of this, or purchase of this property, and there's several options that would, could be beneficial. We could reduce the amount of leasing that we're paying. We currently pay about fifty percent of the building is city employees, which we are now paying money, and would be close to whatever we buy it for, we'd be able to convert that to the price of our monthly fee on paying the note. We also would have to make a decision whether, in the future, should we continue to buy versus build, and those are the kind of options I think we'd be asking the CLA to come back and tell us. Not only is this deal a good deal, but should we be setting a course to continue reducing lease costs in the future? We'd also like to make one technical change on the last sentence of the motion. It should, instead of April thirteenth, it should be April tenth on a return, but that's the whole essence. We had a right of first refusal. We'd like to be able to get as most information as we can to make that decision before it goes on the market, and we only have a very short time to do that, and so that's what the motion is asking.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Seeing no other members on the queue.
I'm sorry, Madam President, just for clarification, that was an instruction for the city clerk to place it on April tenth agenda?
We were asking for the, yes, where's Jerry? Yes, on the April tenth agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. That item will be appear on April tenth. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
The excuses on the desk, Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Tuesday, May first, and Friday, May eleventh, for city business. Those meet council policy.
He will be excused.
And also, Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Friday, June twenty-second, Friday, July thirteenth, July twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-seventh, June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-ninth. Those are all for city business, and they all meet council policy.
Wow, okay. You will be excused, and you will be missed, Mr. Zine.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused June fifth, sixth, and eighth for personal business. That meets council policy.
He will be excused.
Councilmember Cartney requests to be excused Friday, June twenty-ninth, for city business. That meets council policy.
He'll be excused.
Councilmember Weston requests to be excused Wednesday, April eighteenth, to leave at eleven-thirty. Motion is required.
Mr. Rosendahl moves. Mr. Smith seconds.
And Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Wednesday, May ninth, for city business. That meets council policy.
She will be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements today?
Can I move two items forthwith? Would that require reopening of the item?
No, just to let us know which ones.
Item number twenty and forty-three amendment number one, please.
Those items will go forthwith.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any announcements today, colleagues? Any adjourning motions? Yes, we have adjourning motions. If we could ask everyone to please rise.
I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Tom Martin. I don't know if we've done that yet. Tom was the field deputy for Supervisor Don Conavi. And Tom passed away Friday, and he was only 61. He worked for 26 years as a field representative for former State Senator Bob Beverly, and then nine more years as a field deputy for County Supervisor Don Conavi, who called him a class act. Don said he, that Tom was the godfather of field deputies. He really did his job well. Tom moved to Manhattan Beach when he was 11, when his father, Gail Martin, became the city manager in Manhattan Beach. He attended Bishop Montgomery High School, USC, where he studied political science and public administration. Tom served in the Navy during the Vietnam War and then returned to the South Bay. And he signed on with Beverly in 1969, who was a freshman Republican Assemblyman from Manhattan Beach. He stayed with Beverly until he retired from California Senate in 1996, and then he worked for Don Conavi, retiring in 2005 when he became ill. He survived by his wife, Jerry, two stepsons, Brian and Jimmy, and two stepdaughters, Terri and Lisha. Memorial services are scheduled for April 21st at American Martyrs Church in Manhattan Beach, and the family has asked that donations be made in Tom's honor to the 1736 Family Crisis Center or the Los Angeles County Junior Lifeguard Program. And any of us who had any interaction with Tom knew that he really was the epitome of someone who was in public service, someone who always put the constituents' need first. And if you had a problem anywhere in that supervisory district, Tom was the guy to go to, and really, just a good soul, and we're really going to miss him.
Thank you.
And I'd also like us to adjourn in memory of Michael Martinez, who was only 14 years old and passed away on March 21st. He was a life, his whole life spent in San Pedro. He attended San Pedro High School, where he was active in the ROTC program, and he survived by his parents, Don and Rafael Martinez, two sisters, Cassandra and Alexandra, and 12 cousins.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Roy Lee Richards, died Thursday, March 29th. He was a member of the Power of Love congregation under the leadership of Bishop Turner, but where he made his greatest impact on the community, he was responsible for gathering literally millions of dollars of food for their annual community day. Because of he and his wife, thousands of families were fed. His very community-oriented, always provided valuable service to the community, and his service would be held on Saturday, April the 7th at 1:00 p.m. Also, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Vicky Carnes, Associate Director of El Nido Family Centers, who died unexpectedly on Sunday, the March 4th. She was a member of the staff for over a dozen years, serving first as a program director for San Fernando Valley and Antelope Valley Sites. 2001, she became the Division Director for the agency's program addressing child abuse, prevention and treatment, parenting, education, and early childhood education. In 2002, Vicky supervised all programs managed and interfaced with the agency funders. She was an avid reader, enjoyed doing research. She leaves her husband of 20 years, Dr. Earl Carnes, who she met during her studies at University of Southern California, where she received both a master's and a doctorate degree in counseling psychology.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, I would like to adjourn in memory of Mrs. Ping Yih Wu. Mrs. Ping was a very loving, compassionate, and caring wife, mother, grandmother, and friend, who passed away at the age of 90. In her passing, she leaves behind her 92-year-old husband, Pak Wah Yih Wu, sons Peter, Shu, Jack, and Charlie Wu. Charlie is a member of the Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council and just stepped down as president. She is, was, also the proud grandmother of Cynthia, Simon, Sam, Jeffrey, Justin, Christopher, Calvin, and Kelly. She will be missed, but never forgotten, and I believe that Mr. Reyes would like to sign on.
I'd like to as well. All members.
All members.
All members. Yes.
I just want to add that the Wu family's been extraordinary family in Chinatown, the central city. They've been very, very generous in the seasons, especially the Christmas seasons, where they offer many families, many kids, the cheer of the holidays with their great heart. And just want to make sure that we adjourn, and our prayers are with the family.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Are there any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Meeting's adjourned.